Back to order.
Thank you.
Okay, it's three o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And if any of you have one of these with you, please turn it to silent so we don't have phones ringing during the meeting. And if you will join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Date on what is going on with our, uh, the Casella lift station. This, this Monday, we've, we believe we have a partial blockage, uh, within that line, uh, that is pretty much consumed my staff, my field staff's time this week. We are working, we've got two contractors coming in tomorrow to assess us and try to give us a few options on what we're going to do. This is a force main from the Casella lift station into the sanitary sewer in Matarita. We got a call Monday morning, we went out there and we found, uh, the station was not pumping down. And we went through all the procedures and we've come to the conclusion that it is, we've got a pretty good blockage in there. The station will pump down now under pumping, under, under the, the pumps in the wells, but they, it is taking anywhere, it should take about five minutes for, on a normal schedule to pump this station down, it's taken about three hours.
Which one is this, Kenny?
Casella, all the way in the back.
And it's in the discharge force main?
Yes.
You got any air release valves on that line?
Yes, and it is a force main to gravity, so it is not a true force main. We can't figure out why they would, the only reason we could think of or why would they would put an ARV in a, in that type of force main is because of the bridge.
Yeah, if you had a hill or rise, but down here.
It, we can go to each end of it and we, we have flow, but we've got a serious issue in there. Um, if we cannot resolve it tomorrow, we're gonna try, uh, pressurizing the line and pushing it through under pressure. And then we're gonna try to vector it backwards out. We've got the contractor stacked up tomorrow. If we cannot clear it tomorrow, uh, we're gonna have to go to a different, we're gonna take a different setting. We're gonna have to do a pretty major excavation, cut the line, jet up one way and jet the other way until we free this blockage. Uh, it is not currently affecting the residents, uh, other than us being annoying and in their way all the time. Um, but we have, it's a, like I say, if we're gonna have this kind of a problem, this is the station we wanna have it at because we've got such capacity with, it's not even half built out yet.
How long, how long is the force main?
Uh, we're guessing twenty-six hundred feet by the plans there. It does, it does a couple of bends, but we're gonna take it right in the middle. If this procedures we don't do tomorrow will work.
No other pump stations are pumping into the common line?
No.
Single line?
Single line exclusively right into the Matarita, the Matarita station is the master station. Uh, the Casella station pumps to the master.
You discharge into a manhole that goes to a gravity sewer?
Yes. So we are tomorrow, uh, we say we've got two, two contractors stacked up. Uh, we're gonna be in there all day again tomorrow to try to free this up. Uh, there is going to get to a point where it's gonna turn into a major issue if that line becomes one hundred percent blockage. We're just living on borrowed time right now. Uh, there will come a time when it's one hundred percent blocked and we have no other alternative. So we're, we're, we're out pretty far ahead of it. And luckily, we are getting good pumping through, not what we want, but it is pumping through. So, uh, we're not, uh, if it was to stop pumping and it completely, completely plug, plug, plug the line, we would probably have, I would estimate forty-eight hours before we had an overflow. I mean, that's how much capacity that system has. It's designed for fifty-two fourplex units and I think we're at twenty-two, twenty-three right now. So if we're gonna have a problem like this, this is the way we wanna have it.
You don't go under any waterways, do you?
Nope, no, not according to the plans, we do not.
Well, Scotty won.
No, it does not, not according to the plans, it does not, we were, no.
Cause that was on one side of the flowway, Matarita.
It runs parallel to the irrigation main at thirty-six inches across there.
It doesn't go under the flowway?
No, not according to the plans, no, it doesn't, no. Not that we know of.
That's what I was trying to figure out, how does it get there? It's gotta cross the flowway.
Well, it goes across the flow, but it does not go under, under what you're saying, like under the, under it, it goes right, right across that bridge.
Oh, it's down the bridge, okay.
Oh, that's what I was trying to add, okay.
Oh, no.
As I was saying, there's, there's gotta be an answer.
I think you were saying it was going under, under the, under the waterway, no, it goes, it goes across on the bridge.
In case.
In case, well, it, it was put in in two thousand fourteen. That station has sat there for, uh, pretty three years with maybe ten percent usage. It just sits there, we, we, we would run the fire hydrants into the line just to exercise it, so it got exercised, so it didn't just sit there. Uh, and then in the summertime, when everybody leaves, it's a ghost town in there, the flow's just crater out.
The sanitary sewer?
No, this is the, the, the force main, the satellite station pumping. It's, it's a force main, but it's not true force main, it's a force main to gravity. It flows into the sanitary sewer, forcing sewage. Sewage.
Poop?
Poop.
It's a pressure line, that's the issue.
No, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not a true force main, it's a force main to gravity, there's no pressure on that line.
Poop is all you need.
Poop. And, and I wanted to touch on, uh, the AMI system, uh, has, yeah, we're back, we're back in that same position with the AMI system. Uh, we've got, Zenner has helped us a lot, uh, they have given us, uh, an advance, we have five hundred MIUs that we are currently getting ready to replace. They gave us an extra two handheld units so that we can put pretty much our entire staff into the field to start changing all of these MIUs out. Um, and this turns into just, um, it cascades and it, it's systemic now. Where we're getting into reporting issues, billing issues, it's, just keeps going. Uh, we are currently sitting in somewhere between six and seven hundred meter, uh, no reads that we are going to have to go out and assess. Zenner has given, say Zenner has given us five hundred right now and, and extra two handheld units to bring it to five. So we will be able to put five people into the field to start changing all of these out. Uh, with the last two weeks, the events that we've been pretty much occupied this all week with, with Casella, um, we are, we were scheduled to start the twenty-first or the twenty-second. And the entire staff is gonna go out and start swapping everything out until we get finished. This is.
Bad.
Uh, the MIU, it's the same problem, uh, it's getting, it's getting enhanced now, the ETRs, which is the elapsed time register, that's the moneymaker on that, that's what that meter is reporting to us, the register. The registers usually we're running between fifty and sixty, seventy a year. Uh, we jumped up to about four hundred this year. Uh, so we're running into some real, these issues are not getting any better.
What was the year in, twenty nineteen?
Fifteen, fifteen hundred. We did thirteen hundred and, uh, we did thirteen hundred in two thousand eighteen, five hundred and twenty-four. And it's steadily rising, it kind of plateaued out there, but now the ETRs are starting to come into play. And we've gotten, if we don't have the, everything on hand, it just piles up and piles up and piles up and piles up to the point now that every piece, every field staff we have is gonna be in the field changing these MIUs.
I thought we had a, I thought we had a solution for this.
We did, but you didn't follow my recommendation. Don't go with them.
No, I mean, not the, not the pre, like.
We, we, we've budgeted to change over a good amount of the, the, the MIU, the meter boxes. Cause the meter boxes, they're hooked to those steel, unattached steel lids. We just, eh, eh, this point of the, of the year, we've not gotten to that point. When we do, it's gonna be an all-hands effort and we're gonna go out and do it all at one time.
And that's the fix.
Yes, because of the, the, the MIUs are hanging on the top of those stainless steel or the steel lids, unattached. So they just come up and they, it creates all kinds of issues. And we take them off of that and hook them onto the, to the, uh, box.
So is that the bulk of these that are failing or still in those old boxes?
They're, every, uh.
Every single one?
Yeah.
Kenny, have you talked to anybody else that's got these and are they having the same problem?
Um, Leslie, have you?
Can we, can we call some of the other?
We've gone up to City of Fontagordo, we sent our people up to City of Fontagordo with.
They got the same, same setup?
Yeah.
Are they having the same problems?
They've, they've just been online for six months.
Well, who's, who's got them that's had them in for the same length of time that we've had?
Wasn't there someone on the east coast?
Yeah, there was somebody, there was somebody right here in the county, I thought.
Benito Springs Utilities.
And what, what do they, what are we finding out from them?
They, they wouldn't really tell me anything when I talked to them.
Let's, let's give them a call and find out if they're experiencing the same problems. Cause it's.
Is it Zenner meters?
Yeah.
Do we, we hired, we hired an employee from Colorado that had Zenner stuff and that he never had any of these issues where he was at. It was a smaller system, but he, he worked, uh, they had a Zenner system and.
I was thinking Benito was about the same time as ours, the only difference was they had a different installer.
Yes, that was part of the issue.
And I think at this point, it's, it's not replacement cost, cause we got warranty there, it's labor.
But it's going down.
Yeah.
It's a sliding scale.
And we should have fewer failures than more.
Over time, even if it was a manufacturer defect.
You would hope.
For, for a certain, you know, batch, in theory, we'd ran through those. And so when we get replacements, we shouldn't, we definitely shouldn't have re-fallers.
Let's, let's give Benito a call and find out if they are having this same, but let's see, you're running five, five hundred already in twenty-twenty?
Sure.
Yeah, some of that's rollover.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, so the order of magnitude that we're running as far as the total, what was it, four thousand? That, what number we had, four thousand?
Total, you're talking total in our system?
Yeah.
We're over eight thousand now.
That's right, it's four thousand each.
Yeah, eh, we're like eighty-one seventy, I think, somewhere in there.
So see if they're having that same percentage, I, I think these guys came in and told us, what, one, one point two percent failure was acceptable?
Yeah.
Yeah. What are we running?
And how long's it take?
A lot higher than that.
Uh, Kenny, how long's it take to replace one of those units out, time-wise, is it an hour, two hours?
No, we can, oh, and one of our, all of our staff can do it, they're probably fifteen to twenty minutes to do it. The ETRs are a different story because they have to be completely reprogrammed, that's a different monster altogether. The MIUs are just coming in, switching it out and using it on the handheld, it's really not that. But the ETR is a different story, cause the ETR is what, is the money shot, I mean, that's what tells us how much water is, the MIU is just transmitting that data. It is, it is definitely turning into, uh, a real issue.
And I have to say, it, it cascades on the staff across the board because not only are you occupying the field staff time and people that generally don't do that to help, but then it gets into the billing system and customer service because you're having to do manual reads and you're having to go in and adjust those and customers ask why and it, it's just landslide into the office.
What are our friends telling us about why we're continuing to have the problem, what's their response?
Leslie, you wanna address that? They've, they've been, as far as on the customer, on our side, for what we asked them to do and to, 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 the efforts they make, they've, they've never denied anything. Uh, we, we give, they, they're fully aware of what we're doing and they have been, they've furnished us two extra handhelds and, uh, five hundred MIUs upfront, uh, for us to get at, to get, uh, changed out.
But they're not offering any suggestions?
That it's related to install. I'm becoming more involved with the backend of the system, so we're looking at everything from the top end to the bottom. All of the collectors, repeaters, anything that's.
Have we done any new projects since the original in any of the communities? Where we installed these, but it was a different installer and are we running into the same problem?
Everything that has been installed after May two thousand sixteen was from our staff.
Was what?
From our staff, our staff is, has been installing them.
And, and what's the failure rate on those?
Those rarely come up. All of the.
Nothing like this.
Primarily of the install related or.
Do we need a lawyer for this one?
Well, and here's the thing, so even if, even if it's at a minimum twenty, twenty minutes per replacement, that's twenty-six hundred hours of, of time, um.
Over a manual.
Replacement, um, and depending on what those hourly rates is, I mean, that's.
Lot of money.
I mean, that's significant. Plus, not only is it impacted from, uh, staff time to go out and do it, but it's also taken away to other priorities that, that we're neglecting that go in the red because we don't have staff to add, I mean, it's a, it's a domino effect, so. I don't, I mean, Zenner, I think has been very helpful to this point, but.
We have a ten-year warranty on these MIUs, uh, where it's no charge to us, other than to go out and to, uh, I believe we're going into the fourth year of that, of that warranty.
Well, the ten-year warranty, that's a little, I think, misdeceiving in it because it was a sliding scale.
At ten years, it starts to, every year past that, it gets a twenty-year warranty, it's a ten-year mark and then it slides up, yeah.
I have one quick question for you. Kenny, have you heard, um, and Margaret, I don't know, maybe you might even know, um, would there be any reason for, um, uh, lower water pressure in Stony Brook that you can think of?
Well, I could think of lots, a couple of reasons.
Over the last couple of months.
Last couple of weeks, we've had low water pressure in our area.
We currently have the data loggers on, um, Gateway Boulevard, which is our main trunk line running up and down there. And we're, we're in week two of that, we're planning on four weeks of data, of pressure. Every community goes, we have, will go through that main line, um, and say, as a matter of maintenance, so. I could pull the data and tell you, you know, if we're having peaks and lows, but at the front end of it, of, of the top, we were not having, I didn't, we didn't see anything.
Is it a particular time of day, cause I personally haven't noticed low water pressure. Is it like evening or morning?
Morning and evening?
Our, our, I, I was.
That's what it is.
At, at this time of year is our peak usage, I mean, we have a lot more people on the system.
There could be justification, but you, you haven't experienced it.
I have not.
Okay, I was just curious.
But I'm not trying to get kids off to school and.
I don't worry about them, I'm worried about my water pressure. I can, I can put a hose on them, they'll be fine.
When we do, I say, when we do receive a, a complaint on pressure, all my standard procedures, we go out there and we put a data logger onto their hose bib going into their house for seven, period of seven days, we try to get.
I'll just shoot you an email and, you know, maybe that's something you can do.
Anything else? Any questions for Kenny?
I had one.
Oh, go right, sorry.
Just, just gave them mine. If Stony Brook is having water pressure problems now, what's gonna happen when a senior high school opens up in two years?
We're gonna have some more demand for, we're gonna have some more demand at peak hours. Um, there again, it, it's not in the morning time through the afternoon and then at night, it really wouldn't have that much of effect, but we would have a definite spike, uh, in this, in the winter months when schools are in session during the, during the morning hours and the afternoon. At night, not so much, uh, but during the day, yes, we will have a bigger.
Have you thought, have you thought through as how you're gonna handle it, the, the demand?
We, we don't have a water plant, we, we buy it in bulk, so I mean, we can take in as, as much as we can take in. Uh, pressure-wise, about the best I can do is, is verify that we have a pressure issue and check on, make sure the valvings are correct. But as far as the plant, the, we have no, as far as water pressure goes, uh, if it's not on our end, but at the high school, mm-mm.
This little sort of off of loop line that goes up Griffin, goes back across through Hampton Park, isn't it?
Goes at the Belcross, through Belcross, and then through the backside of Stony Brook.
That goes to Stony Brook.
Yep, right there. They, they, they did a full pressure evaluation for sewer irrigation and water before, prior, six, um, six months prior to them even breaking ground, they did a full evaluation. And if there was any issue that they would've had, they would've, they would've, Dana, Dana Hume would've brought it to our attention. As far as the, and they, they did all the projections for the demand when they, before they did it.
Thank you, Kenny. Okay, that brings us to four A, proposal for new high-service pump piping and controls for irrigation system. So I guess that is you.
Kenny Hall, utility manager, this is a action requested to prevent an expenditure of one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars for a new hundred and fifty high ser, high-service pump piping relocation, seventy-five horsepower jockey pump with a new control system, new electrical service and software upgrade that we are going to have to do. We are adding a sixth pump to our current SCADA system for the irrigation system. We will be bringing the system back up to its designed, uh, gallonage. We, eh, with, with the addition of the, uh, fifth pump, we will be running it, we will be able to do probably ten thousand five hundred gallons per minute. We are going to add the jockey pump, uh, for the sixth pump and then a new can and electrical, uh, connection for that pump with additions to the new SCADA system. So you say, give you a, uh, I, I, the background on, on this, where we're really having the issues is, is if we have a maintenance, uh, pump, we were to lose a pump, uh, as these new communities come online, uh, the demand has just skyrocketed. Uh, we will, without, if we were to lose a pump, uh, or did not have a backup pump, uh, we're gonna have trouble meeting demand. So this, this addition will bring us back up to design specifications with ten thousand gallons per minute and with the addition of the jockey pump, which will run during the days and the low-demand times.
This is Larry, I think you had a question?
Yes, this is not in the budget, correct?
No, not in the capital budget, no.
No, it's not in the budget, okay. And is this an emergency?
I would consider it a very high priority item. I would say that every piece of property in this district is attached to these high-service pumps, working.
But it's not an emergency?
It will be, no, in, in that sense of the word, no. If we were to lose a pump tomorrow, I'd tell you it's an emergency.
Thank you.
That shows in that last paragraph before, uh, recommendation, this project is included in the twenty-twenty-three capital improvement plan.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't it, I, I didn't know we had it. It's the real terminology, it's, it's included in the year twenty-twenty-three fiscal year of our capital improvement plan. I don't think we have a new capital improvement plan, it's the same one. Alls we're doing is accelerating, accelerating this to try to get consistency in our system.
Yes.
It's an emergency.
And Mr. Tink, we, we brought this up, um, really partway through the last fiscal year when I did a transfer out of reserves for the engineering and designing this, because we were looking at it and part of that problem is, is we just don't have that redundancy. And if we lose one of those pumps, um, we will not be able to meet peak demand during the winter season.
That's why I said, it's an emergency.
And we're also gonna take, uh, one of the pumps and rebuild it and have all the flanges and that, so it's out there. So if we do lose one, we can replace it in, in a matter of, you know, a couple of days versus a couple of weeks.
Question, question for Stephen. Stephen, on the cash flow deal, the fact that it's accelerated for, to twenty-twenty-three, two years ahead of schedule, any ris, any issues that that creates on our cash flow on the, uh, capital?
No, no, because of the dollar amount and you're already, you know, you already have reserves kind of set aside for this type of stuff, so, no. It wouldn't be a problem with the cash flow.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Guy, you have?
I'll, I'll second if I may, I'll also have a question, please. Would it be correct to, uh, just, to, to, uh, address this as being a, uh, proactive act, action as opposed to a reactive action after we've had trouble with a pump and, and, and took us weeks and weeks to get it all re, all re, uh, established?
Proactive. You're being very, eh, eh, say, eh, eh, the reason I, eh, we've replaced all those pumps, those pumps are all brand-new or within two thousand fifteen, which is a jockey pump. From two thousand sixteen to now, we've replaced all those pumps with brand-new pumps. The likelihood of one of them breaking, of course, it could happen, but it's not nearly as likely as it was before.
Okay.
Uh, to meet demand as these new communities come online, uh, we are going to, where that fifth pump is going to be needed. Will Prado be done and fully operational by the spring of this year? No, we're not. Uh, but we are getting very, you know, we are getting to that point where it is getting to the, this time next year, we're gonna be fully built out, uh, as far as Pelican Preserve is, which is my greatest concern, Prado, to do, how much water they use. Uh, so if we don't, if we, it is, and my point is to be proactive with this, to add that, get that fifth pump in as fast as we can.
I want to support your recommendation, but I also want you to tell me that this is the best way that we can spend two hundred thousand dollars of our hard-earned residence money at this time.
Yes, this is, this is, this, this is it, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Ben.
Yeah, and I, I think just to kind of piggyback on Bill, I, I think what he was looking for is, wha, what's the justification for pulling it forward to now? It, it, is it, it sounds like it's more kind of risk mitigation, you know, to limit our, our potential risk. If we put it off, let's say, to next year or six, you know, when we get on the next physical, um, you know, budget year, what's the, what's the justification for pulling it forward now versus waiting, even if we bump it up to a twenty-twenty-one initiative as opposed to twenty-twenty-three?
October, this October, eh, with, wha, wha, and the utility manager's report for last, uh, last board meeting, well, October's a perfect example of that, where we're, our demand is just skyrocketing up. You say, if we were to do, I was gonna say, if we were to lose a pump, there, we can work around it for a certain amount of time. There are ways of doing it, but say, every piece of property in this district is attached to that irrigation system working. I mean, it, it, it has to work.
So your, your pull-forward plan is trying to get ahead of the.
Yes.
Peak demand in October, that's why you're pulling it forward at this time, that's what makes it critical because potential failure, failure could cause, you know.
Especially in April, I mean, in April, I mean, there's three months.
And then just to justify the, the funding source, so, um, pulling from the reserve, but if, am I, just let me, uh, let me know if I'm reading this correctly, that the, basically the, the replenishment will come as the fifteen percent increase? So basically, we're gonna pull from reserves, but then kind of replenish from the fifteen percent increase?
We, we put a fifteen percent off the top, uh, on water sewer and irrigation for renewal and replacement. So that those funds, uh, for that work are being replaced by monthly when we collect our revenues. So if we pull that money out, um, I don't think it'll take four or five months till that money's back.
Right, so either we, we could've technically waited for it to accrue, pull it directly from there, but we're gonna borrow it today and then replenish it with the fifteen percent increase, so it's, it's not an impact to residents. That's, that's really what the bottom line is, this won't impact residents from a, from a cost perspective, cause we're almost self-funding it from the increase.
Right, we're not increasing the rates to do that. And I think, um, what Kenny was also speaking at too, and when, we've seen some historically high demand in October and we're also looking at, it's bumping right now seventy-six hundred, seventy-eight hundred, and our capacity is at eight thousand. So during that peak time, those few months of the year, if we lost one of those pumps and people couldn't turn their sprinklers on for four or five days, you know, during the dry weather, it would cause some real problems and we just don't have that redundancy in the system. You have to remember, it used to have five hundred and fifty horsepower pumps and before our time, they took one out and put in the jockey pump, which was a good move because they were only running five or six thousand gallons a minute.
Well, since then, we've added all these communities and all this demand onto the system and not accounted for. We had to, this pump accounts for that now.
And, and I happen to think that, uh, irrigation water is almost important as potable water in this community.
Yeah, that's right.
It is.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, uh, to approve the expenditure of the hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars for, um, high-service pump, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, goes your pass as four more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Proposed right off of bad debt from Enterprise.
And this item, Leslie will address it, um, we are bringing it back from the last meeting.
Okay, um, the agenda item is to address the outstanding balances that have been remaining on the age receivables for, since two thousand and six to two thousand and eleven. I pretty much separated these into cat, three separate categories. The first is, um, the foreclosed homes. The accounts listed there are, um, first of all, the first one, Lakeland Circle, in May of two thousand nineteen, the board approved to release the utilities to the new buyer for two hundred and fifty dollars. That was for Black Point asset. However, during that meeting, I went back in the minutes and, um, we never really voted or approved on, to write that remaining balance off. So that remains on there. The other three locations were foreclosed or bankruptcy, um, properties. We reviewed those with Tony individually in two thousand and eighteen. We placed liens for four years of charges and penalties and the current buyer and bank, or bank, did, um, satisfy and pay those liens. So these are the balances that remain on the property outside of those liens that have been paid.
Yeah, and the difficulty is with the foreclosure actions, the mortgage holders usually have priority and if you go to a sale and so that's, we get wiped out as long, as well as the associations at time. The one that's on there that we can defer and keep it, open that right off, is Santa Luz. Uh, I went back and pulled my memos from two thousand seventeen, I wanna bring that back to the board for direction, uh, cause back then, the, under the district's rules and policies, we can refuse service for any new connections if there are unpaid charges by the applicant. And, um, I asked Leslie if there were any new connection applications since November two thousand seventeen, she said no. So I'd like to bring it back, refresh my memorandum from two years ago and get some board direction so that when that developer comes in and applies, there's a clear direction as to how that should be handled.
Well, they have twenty-eight units over there, I think the last four were probably in that two sixteen, two seventeen timeframe. But they've got thirty-six more units to build, uh, if that offers any leverage.
I think it does, and again, so I'd rather bring it back though for a separate discussion with my, and refresh with my prior memos from, uh, two, two years ago. And see if we get Mr. Bloom here, I'm sure he would, willing to show up. And see if we get Mr. Bloom here, I'm sure he would be willing to show up.
Okay.
So if the board, I asked Leslie if we could separate that one out, so the last one, number nine, suggests that that not be written off?
Those are displayed on the screen.
The 10,190, I totally agree.
Because we have been billing them, sending them the statements routinely.
Correct, they are paying current charges.
On everything else.
Mm-hmm. And the other one is Fairway Lakes Drive, it's at the monument sign. I think this is a billing discrepancy, both end on the south and north entrance have a meter that was watering plants either at that monument sign or at the right of way. And in 2008, the district received notice that WCI was not going to manage those monuments and those plants anymore. So the meter, the south entrance, or the north, the north entrance was closed out properly, changed over. And then the, the other, the south, was never addressed. So the account just continued to accrue base fee charges and penalties.
Well, we, that's gateway rates.
No, Fairway Lakes Drive across from 711, that little monument sign.
Oh, wait, not Fairway Isles, Fairway Lakes, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, so neither meter has had any consumption since 2008. In 2016, I've locked the meter and we recently pulled the meter, so there's nothing going through there. In my opinion, I think that that account should have been closed out, similar to the other one back in 2008.
And I also wanted to add my kudos to Leslie and her staff, some of the personnel and residents that they have to deal with, and the manner in which the staff is treated is horrible, and I applaud their, the staff's professionalism.
Mr. Bloom's fun to deal with.
Oh, I'm not talking about Mr. Bloom, I'm talking to some others out there.
Do we need a motion to approve the?
Writing them off, yes.
Writing them off of everything except the Santa Luz? Do we need to delineate each one of them?
No, I think you can do, I think the first, first five on the list, I think it's sufficient.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion in the second to write off the first five collections. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Thursday. Proposal for additional Visa cards and credit minimums.
And this was also another item, continued from the last agenda, Supervisor Flair, he asked that Mr. Bloom be here when we address this issue. But it's basically just adding additional credit cards and adding a percentage to the total. Right now, our credit limit's at 16,000, we're looking at taking it to 27,500. On some of those credit cards, there are continuous charges being going to them. And we're also trying to take advantage of quick purchasing, Amazon Prime and other agencies to make those purchases. So it's really just adding Public Works and Parks and Rec and the business manager, the business card for them.
Hey, Chris, how do you, how do you manage the purchasing? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand raised, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Do we have to pay for these cards? Is there a fee for these cards?
No.
No.
There's no, like, you mean like an annual fee?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, and are these bills paid immediately, so there's no finance charge?
Yes, yes.
Hope so.
Okay.
I'm hesitating because I don't remember whether or not these are electronic ACHs.
They are now.
Yeah, okay, so that, so meaning, money gets pulled out automatically when it's due? But we still have to go through the procedure of getting the receipts and everything like that, that's an important part of the audit process.
So there's no finance charge then?
No, no.
Those are my questions.
And we also, with the Amazon Prime, we use our standard purchasing, we'll still do a purchase order. And when they make those charges, that purchase order number is attached to it, and we're also tax exempt with that account. We pay it upfront, but then they write us a check for the taxes after the fact.
Yeah, so you're, so you basically have additional purchasing cards for the different departments or the different department leaders. Are they, how are you identifying purchases for each particular car? They're, they're different cards, right? So you'll be able to track purchase from either department or by individual.
Individuals, and gets that statement, and then we link that to the purchase order and the account number, and then we submit that.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions? Mr. Guy, any questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll go make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
That we approve the increased limits of the Visa card as requested by management.
I'll second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It doesn't change the budget, we can't use it to spend any more money, we don't have budgeted, so.
And that 2750, that's kind of a weird number. Is that just the next incremental increase?
It was just trying to get, you know, what there was needed, but staying reasonable, but also trying to make sure they had it up.
Capital financing plan.
And when we were having the discussion to approve the facilities plan, we did not have that capital financing plan in front of us. So I'm really just bringing this back, but it gives you a good idea where we are on our borrowing for the state revolving loan fund. And they require that information when you make that application.
If you look at Agenda Page 55. As I read it, this is for the various irrigation and wastewater system. And the middle of that page says that the sources of revenue are non-advalorem assessments. And I would have thought that they would have been the revenue from the billings.
Yeah, they are.
Am I wrong?
No, you're right.
You're right.
Good catch.
I think that, yeah, I think originally this was part of the other.
I think they used the other one and just didn't catch that, that line.
But it could be exquisitely important if we don't get it done, if it isn't done right.
It's coming out of your pocket, it just depends on which pocket it's coming out of.
Then it notes that, and good catch, it says, projects pledging utility operating revenues should attach a copy of existing proposed rate ordinance. So if the board's inclined, what I would suggest is to ratify this financing plan subject to this revision. And the staff would work up a draft resolution with the draft rates and fees and charges as they are proposed now, and then send this off to DEP.
Well, I'd asked that question at the last meeting, and I thought I got a different answer. I asked Danny, don't you have to show anticipated rates and charges when you're submitting the facility plan? And I thought he said no.
I hear you saying no, it's not to make the actual application for the financing and then do the agreement.
Okay, because up north, you had to submit it to have, show impact, financial impact. My thing is, paying on down, this indicates that the impact is $628,405. But what does that mean to the person on the street? I'm taking it, that is the difference. We have to tell everybody what the value is as far as the CDD, but its impact on the existing bill payer. You've just got to have a real knowledge that we got 6,000 EAUs and multiply times 12 and divide that number to get the monthly rate.
I think.
They don't level that up north, you have to tell them exactly what it means in English. This is a $20 a month increase on your bill. Down here, you don't have to tell them, I guess.
I think that's what's intended by that bold note underneath that. Where Mr. Guy noted the next line.
Yeah.
I think that's consistent with what you understood.
The rate ordinance is what.
Should attach a copy of that.
Draft the resolution.
But we're not there yet. Right, okay, okay.
Mr. Tinkle will be addressing that in detail while we talk about the assessment methodology. But really on the wastewater side, if we do the borrowing for that project, it'll be a bimonthly increase of eight cents per thousand gallons.
Eight cents per thousand?
Yes, sir. And on the irrigation side, with that 7.4 million, it would be bimonthly an increase of 10 cents per thousand gallons on the irrigation water.
Now, are you going to do it, that, to me, is risky doing it that way. To me, whenever you've got something that's a fixed charge, and has major hand slaps associated with it, I'd rather see it on the base charge than the usage charge. See where I'm going?
Well, we can certainly figure it that way, I'll have those numbers and we'll generate them for you because we have the number of accounts, and we can spread it out on the capital and the base facility charge also.
Because if somebody starts trying to conserve money, or I'm sorry, is trying to conserve usage, you don't get the money. And then you're short on the PNI. I'd rather see at least a major portion of it coming out of the base charge, both water and irrigation.
Especially since our charges are running low in the county.
Good point.
Mrs. Flair, you can have your hand up.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So we don't have the exact amount of this would be a year, a yearly increase to the residents? Do we?
I have, I have $575,100.
That's not for, that's for the whole thing, but I'm talking about an individual residence increase.
Yeah, that would depend on the amount of their bill, like I said, it's eight cents adding on the bimonthly bill per thousand. And this is not even attaching it to the base facility charge and 10 cents per thousand gallons. So if somebody was using 10,000 gallons, it would be another dollar bimonthly. But that's over a 20-year period.
Yeah, but see, residents would like to know, I mean, you're just saying what it is. I think they need to know the exact fee it would be for the.
If you do it on 6,000 ERUs, which I know we have more than that, but if you use 6,000, that's 6,000 times 12, 72,000 bills per year. And 72,000 into the 628 is $8.72. So if it went as a base rate addition, you're less than 10 bucks.
For the year.
Per month.
Per month?
Per month.
Per month?
Bimonth.
Bimonth, yeah.
They go bimonthly.
Then it'd be 16, be 16.
It'd be, okay.
We'll double that.
We'll calculate that on our BFEs and have it for the next meeting.
So that would be $8.72 a month times 12.
Correct. Yeah, I think we have a little bit more than 6,000, so it's gonna be a little bit less than that.
So that was just informational, what you've said from here. Just, just to, yeah, go ahead. So that's all about $104 a year. Just one mention now, a little after.
And we got consent agenda item for financial reports?
Madam Chair, just one question, I guess, for clarification I made from Stephen. My understanding is that the application to DEP for SRF funding for this requires a financing plan as part of it? And this is what is proposed to go up to DEP?
That's correct, yes. This capital plan is, when you say a financing plan, you're talking about this document, yes.
Yeah, and so I know that the board approved the facilities plan, and this is an appendix to the facilities plan. So I guess the question is, did anybody question whether the board approved purposes that, as a middle of the facilities plan, the financing, the capital financing plan? I think it's best to have that answered yes, and so if the board could ratify the submittal to the state.
So you want a motion to approve the capital financing plan?
And ratify the submittal to the state.
Right, subject to the changes, though.
Subject to the changes, as discussed.
Switching from the non-advalorem to utility.
Utility rates, fees and charges.
And there's some subsequent pages that would have to be adjusted to follow that along.
Yes.
Okay.
I would make that motion. Yeah, I agree, it needs to be done.
Sir, second?
Not yet.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
Could you repeat?
All in favor, say, pardon?
The motion is to ratify and approve the capital financing plan in the agenda package subject to the modifications as discussed that the source of financing and funding would be utility rates, fees and charges with the corresponding mathematical arithmetic calculations in the plan itself. And send that to the state.
Just what I said. Just what I said.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Stephen, are you happy with that?
I'm sorry? Pose?
I'll never be able to repeat it, but sure.
Motion carried, three to one.
We like the idea.
The next item is the financial report, item 4D. Are there any questions on the financial report for the period ending November 30th, 2019? Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose?
Bill, question for Steve. Have you, what was our final last year numbers on the balance?
Wait, you don't have final, you'll get final, you know, in a couple months. But I did rerun the numbers, it is about a little bit over 700,000 favorable in the general fund.
How much?
I wonder when you're gonna wake up.
Hello?
Okay, so just for clarification, of that amount includes the reimbursement was from prior years from FEMA. So that's why that number is so much larger.
What is it not counting that?
I think it was probably then a little bit under.
Four.
No, I think it was 200, or average about $250,000, I believe we got back from FEMA.
We pulled some stuff out, yeah.
So it's maybe 400, 450.
So, so the FEMA deal is, is that gonna happen?
No, no, we've already received that money, that's in that, that's in that number.
Good news.
Also, keep in mind, though, of that amount, you carried forward and you're using 120,000 of that in this year's budget. Plus, you know, there are some other items, but, I mean, again, either way, it was a favorable year.
So we're netting out when you take into all that into consideration?
So you take, I would take about maybe 450 and then back out another 120, just to be safe, so that puts you a little bit over 300,000.
Okay, good, okay. Good news.
Yeah, good work, there you, you did good there, yeah.
Good luck, Alan.
Okay. Will you approve the financial report?
Yes, Mr. Tinkle and Ms. Flair, you have your.
Thank you.
Capital financing plan with Mr. Tinkle and myself, and three to one.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tinkle?
Hurry, quick.
I'm reserving the right to come back around the second time.
So I just wanted to provide it on the employee survey, I'm close to having it finished, I'll have it for the, for the next meeting. It probably won't take that long, but that's when I'll have a chance to bring it back.
And we have to have Chris's report in by the 23rd week from today.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Mr. Guy?
I have done.
Mrs. Flair?
Yes, I do, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
First of all, I want to thank that staff, that I like to go, to go out with, looking at the landscaping. There are a few things that don't seem to be getting done, like Timber Ridge, when we got rid of the Mexican Petunias and they put in the Lantana in there. The Lantana doesn't seem to be being weeded, okay? All right, also Long Gateway, they seem to be not doing their edging at all, okay? And we did notice that the variegated. The Abercola that was knocked down by some car at the beginning. And I would like to have Manscaped come to one of our meetings, it was suggested once before. Because they're throwing their mulch, just throwing it, and it's going on the road. They're throwing it over amp things all along the medians and gateway. It just seems that there's no care where they put it.
Is that the Pine Stroh?
Utah Pine Stroh.
Pine Stroh, yes, okay? And so I'm concerned, and also, there needs to be a plan for Griffin and 82 now that they're finished. I don't know what we're gonna do there, but we need to do some enhancement, it just looks sick. Sick is good, all right? And the other question I have, is there any plans for the oak trees? I know that those have been mentioned before, do we have any plans on what we're gonna do with the roads and the oak trees? I'm really concerned about those. I'm almost finished. Firewood.
Oak trees, what are we talking about, Kathleen?
The ones that go into the road, we mentioned this before. The ones that go into the road, we mentioned this before.
Get the same thing on the sidewalks, it's, it's horrible.
Right, we need to have some kind of plan for them.
It's expensive.
Yeah.
That's gonna be, that's gonna have to be a budget.
It's a horrible check to write, too.
But it's something that, the roads are, you know, they're just.
I'm telling you, we hu- we hire an arborist on staff and self-fund them for five years and they take out all the oaks. Self-firewood.
Those, uh, when you were referring to the roads, were you referring to Gateway Boulevard?
Yes, I am.
And, and that's not our road, but it's our problem.
But it's our problem, right.
Yeah, one of these days they're gonna wake up, when one of those motorcycle cops go down there and hit a couple of those bumps.
Yep.
They'll know about it. It's bad.
I won't dri- I won't travel in the right lane.
You can't travel in that right lane, it's, it's bad.
Yeah.
And we are doing preliminary design with an irrigation consultant who is gonna speak with an arborist, but from Daniels Boulevard up to Commerce Lakes, he's gonna do a preliminary design on the median and a system replacement. And, uh, he said the same thing, what's the policy for the plantings, you know, are we gonna work around these oak trees and jack and bore under them, or are we gonna put new plant material in?
Yeah, but what, what does the county say, I mean, I know that they're, you know, it does.
Code minimum.
No, but what I mean is like, I'm sure they've had to address a similar issue in other areas.
They just tell you it's had, gotta be replaced with a, uh, what's the word, one, uh, uh, same type of trees and oak they have a name for.
What I mean, I'm su- I'm sure the counties had to address, I mean, not only this county, their.
Every one.
Every county in, in the surrounding area has probably had to address these oaks at some point.
Where they start tearing up stuff.
Where, you know, i- is there some best practices that, that's in play? Um, and is there something we, you know, we should, could, something we should consider as part of, maybe something more cost effective? I mean, there's no, we gotta either tear it down, pull it out, you know, there's not so much, only so much you can do, but I'm just curious what the county's take would be on it.
I'll, I'll check into it, but our situation's a little unique where we have a roadway, that they have on the roadway, but we on the landscaping.
Yeah.
And the medians, so it's, it's not prevalent, but, uh, as soon as, like you said, there's an accident or they're, they're, they're gonna come say you need to fix eight hundred linear feet of this road at, uh, heavy load S one, the costs are phenomenal.
They, they, they made that clear when we were turning them over, that your landscaping causes any damage to either the road and or the sidewalks, it's yours.
It's in, in fact, if I recall, it's in the agreement.
Yeah.
And there's complications too, because you've got median impact and then you've got sidewalk, you know, they, both can impact the roads, but, you know, do you address one first and then?
First, first time somebody trips and falls on Gateway Boulevard and they get sued, we'll know about it.
And we, we have, um, three bids that we've received for working on that linear trail and we are moving forward with twenty-five thousand dollars of that work. But the, those bids and that costs range from two to twelve dollars a linear foot, depending on the severity of the impact from the trees. So when you go in there to re- redo that path and, uh, we're starting inspections on it now, it's two to twelve dollars a linear foot.
I tell you.
We just bid, we got one bid, we got two more coming in, four hundred linear feet of sidewalk, five foot wide, thirty thousand dollars, seventy-five dollars a foot.
Whoa.
Mr. Tinkle, maybe you can hire our staff to do that.
We hired two people and then we contract out, we take Gateway Greens business as a, as a vendor to them.
And, and that's why we have that concern, we're pouring, and we're pouring those panels ourselves, cause we can't afford to bring people in to do it.
Makes you, makes you, we bid on that. The, the prices are, they're, they're crazy.
Mrs. Flaherty, I'm sure that you have one more thing.
I do have one more thing. I want to thank Stephen Bloom for sending all of those invoices and I would appreciate if you keep sending me invoices for all of Gateway.
All, all of Gateway.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna look at what we're spending, okay?
That's a lot, but okay. Invoices for what?
Invoices, what, what, um, what we're spending, our invoices that go through, you know.
I think that should be a discussion topic.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's an awful lot.
That's the, I mean, that, I understand your, your point of view on it, but it seems a little excessive from, from our board perspective and, and what our oversight should be.
I just wanna see what's, we're, we're paying.
I know, but.
About a, a printout of, you know, instead of getting all of the invoices?
You could do an Excel sheet of it.
Check register for you?
Yeah, that's the easiest one.
Something easy, just cause I, I wouldn't wanna.
That'd be easier.
You know, I mean, that's, that could be.
Excel sheet would be fine, like, but I wanna, just, I don't know, we're spending.
The ledger shows the individual charges and, and.
I'll send you a couple of things and you can let me know which one you like.
Okay, thank you.
On a weekly basis, we, we send those invoices down to Infomarc, um, in a batch file for them to do, so on a weekly basis, you could get them from us, but they get the same file.
No, I'm generous, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I believe you said you did have something.
Just, just, just real quick, we have the workshop next Thursday.
Yes.
And we've all got the reports, it's some interesting reading. Don't, don't wait till Thursday morning to read it, I've got news for you, don't try it.
You got an advanced copy, I can tell, I just saw mine today.
I've read it and amended it three times already.
I did get one online, I didn't open it yet, so, cause it was today.
This is the whole thing, right?
So with that in mind, I will say that we are adjourned and the time is five seventeen.
Oh, oh, Chris, hey, Chris?
Sir?
One thing, uh, man, we may wanna call the board back for session, the application for SRF?
I'm sorry.
Uh, if you can explain the situation and I'm.
Take that back, we're not adjourned yet.
Reconvening.
And we, we, um, received an agreement, it's just an amendment from the last Lake Bank agreement where they made some adjustments. Part of the construction went down, the inspection fees, what, uh, what we signed with Tetra Tech on the technical services, it went up. And it's about a forty-seven thousand dollar difference, um, and so they amend the loan agreement, it's actually lower, Ms. Flaherty, than the original one. But, uh, this closes that section out, so they sent us, and when they send it, they want it back in three weeks. So I got it a couple of days after the agenda items were due, so we would like to, um, put it on the agenda for the.
Chris, if it's just a relatively small amount, forty-seven thousand dollars.
Yes.
So I guess the board could, if the board could add it as a discussion item and action item now to authorize the chair to execute the loan amendment to modify the amount, to increase the principal amount by forty-seven thousand dollars, is that appropriate?
Yes.
The interest rate stays the same, the maturity date stays the same, it might just be a little bit higher payment.
And, uh, that information is in the board book that was posted today, so we were getting ready to put on the agenda next week.
There's, there's not enough of the contingency to cover that little amount?
Oh, there is, it's covered, it's just that when they close out that portion of the loan, everything that comes together, it's their book, yeah, it's their book.
And they need it back before we have our next regular board meeting. The alternative could be the board can continue the, this meeting to, like, ten minutes before the workshop, or the workshop time at three o'clock for the sole purpose of taking up this amendment.
I did, yeah, I'm just, prove it now.
I'll, I'll make the, make the motion.
Motion to open the public meeting, hearing if anybody wants to talk on that, Madam Chair?
Yes, anybody wants to discuss what we're about to vote on? Zingun.
Zingun, yeah, sorry.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to go ahead and approve that amendment that was sent down for the SRF fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is done now, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, no, that's, that needs to be cleaned up.
FDP, State Agency Store, appreciate local drive. You know that?